This is the April 12th, 2023, open public meeting of the Needham Library Board of Trustees, being held via high-grade format, allowing remote attendance. First, I will take a roll call to confirm that the trustees, library staff, and persons anticipated beyond the agenda or present and can hear me. Trustees, each and one, Anna Geraldo Carr, here, J. Fialco.
Yeah.
Rob Pettit.
Here.
Eric Hardgrave.
Here.
Michael O'Neill.
Here.
Megan Small.
Here.
And myself, K. Cahill, here. Congratulations to those elected to this board yesterday. So, and now we have library staff, we have Director Kim Newitt, here. Assistant Director Dimitri Kyriakas.
Here.
Technology Specialist Dana Tawa, here. Programs, oh no, she's, Gabe's not here. Reporting Secretary Faith Fishley, here. You know, your title, yeah, I should turn this down.
Administrative Specialist.
Administrative Specialist, Jenna White. Okay, and do we have anyone here from the Library Foundation of Needham tonight?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay, this meeting recorded, if there's a problem that prevents the completion of this meeting, we'll reconvene at 7:00 PM, May 9, 2023. I hereby call this meeting of the Needham Board of Library Trustees to order at 7:07 PM. I thought we would start with just introductions, since we have new trustees on board, I thought we might very briefly go around and each of us introduce ourselves and say maybe those who've been on the board, how long we've been on it, and any other fact or two about ourselves. You want to start? And that MJ, you want to introduce yourself?
Sure, I know everybody, at least a little bit, so I'm J. Fialco. I first got involved with the library by joining the Friends, it was the year before COVID, and I got a knee replacement and I was no longer coaching basketball, I was looking to fill another slice, a slice of my community life, and behind basketball, it's basketball court in the library, my favorite place is to be. So I got involved with the Friends, and then that led to, you know, I guess, you know, at some point along the way, me filling a, replacing a trustee who had left, and I've been a trustee, it seems like, for about three years. My, my day job is a lawyer, these days, I'm the lawyer for GBH in Boston, and that's my basic background.
We know Kim Newitt, our director, of course. If you want to say anything, Kim.
Oh, sure, you're in the lineup here.
Yes, so I've been here for about a year and a half, and I think have several changes now in the board, so it means to work with you all, get to know the new folks.
Going like this, okay. Hi, my name's Eric Hardgrave, I'm now elected. I've been serving since July 2022, when I filled a spot, and while I'm not at the library or serving as trustee of the library, I'm a professor at Holy College, but here, just on the road, and I have two little kids, so when we do come here quite.
Hello, everyone, Anna Geraldo Carr, I've been involved with the library since my kid is 15, so it's been at least 10-plus years. As a trustee, I started September 2018. I am scared to feel that I'm the most senior trustee at this point. It's very scary. I know. Professionally, I am a leadership strategist, part-time at MIT, and I also have my own business on the same topic, and I am a community member.
I'm K. Cahill, I am in my second term, going, this will be my fifth year as a library board trustee member, and I professionally journalist, writer, editor, largely retired, but not completely, and just turned out, I work in pottery at the Porch Mill Studio in Needham, I lived in Needham for a long time, my son's dad, through all of the schools here, and I am a very strong library lover and advocate.
I'm Rob Pettit, I'm also going into my fifth year on the library board, I joined in April of 2019, and I'd been involved with Friends a little bit before that. Outside the library, I am a corporate securities lawyer at Affirmant Boston, I've got two young daughters, six and eight, and they really kind of sparked my interest in the Needham Library, I've been in town here for about a decade, and also always been a strong library supporter.
I'm John Smith, from the Library Foundation of Needham. I was brought onto the board by a Girl Scout leader that I worked with.
I'm Megan Small, I'm newly elected, I'm a lawyer by training. A lawyer by training, I'm not currently working at it, but I'm helping take care of my two little boys, who are almost four and six, so been in Needham for six years since July, and have always been a big, big book lover, a big library lover, wanted to get involved in the community and get to know some more folks, so here I am.
I'm Chris Lane, I'm the reporting secretary for since November of 2021.
Wow, I'm Michael O'Neill, I'm newly elected, I've been a resident of Needham, I went to Mitchell, Pollard, Needham High, so I'm a townie at heart, one of my favorite places to be is the library, and the potential and the opportunity to be on this board is like heaven sent, because this is one of the most peaceful places, I find solace here, there's great staff, and anything we can do to support the mission of the library, and specifically Kim, we're all in for her, so, thank you.
Yeah, we don't want to miss you.
I'm Jenna Lee, administrative specialist, I have worked here for 10 and a half years now, which, need a president, and probably would be here just as much, but it's here.
Thank you.
My name's Dimitri Kyriakas, I'm the assistant director, I've been, this is director for the last six years, I actually live in Natick, worked in libraries for about 29 years this year, and can't say enough about, it's the best career move I've ever made, I used to do TV production before I became a librarian 29 years ago, so. It's a great community, and the library is very well supported by the community, and that's a terrific partnership.
Okay, thanks, everybody, we all know who each other are now, and so we have, our next item on the agenda is the election of officers. We'll now hold the annual election of officers for the 2023 Needham Library Board of Trustees. First, we'll start with a nomination for chair, mayor, and here a motion. Eric.
I move to nominate J. Fialco for chair.
Second, and second, Anna Geraldo Carr, okay, so we're going to take a, I guess if you just need a voice vote for this, all in favor of J. Fialco to become chair, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Nay, no, just kidding.
You can vote for yourself, okay, great, and so now we'll move on to the nomination for vice chair, do I hear a nomination, do I hear a motion?
Oh, I, oh my God, I'm going to make a motion to have Rob Pettit as vice chair.
Second, from Eric Hard, all in favor of Rob Pettit as vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And this again, and thirdly, the nomination for secretary, mayor, here a motion to nominate.
Are you okay? Okay.
Okay, so, do I want to nominate, make the nomination?
Sure, I will, I moved the nominee for secretary, Megan Small.
Second, and just to make sure that you are.
We spoke today, this is not an ambush.
Okay, so, all in favor of electing Megan Small as secretary or trustee, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, okay, so, opposition script, so unanimous once again, and the last one would be appointment for the Chair of the Arts and Exhibitions Subcommittee. I have volunteered to do that, if someone cares to nominate me.
Make a motion to nominate K. Cahill as the Chair of the Arts and Exhibition Committee.
All seconded back.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All opposed? Then I am Chair of the Arts Committee, okay, now we officially hand our new chair, J. Fialco.
All right. Good luck to you. So as I said, I've gone my whole life without buying or reading Robert's Rules of Order, usually I'm the person you need to get into order. We have several former chairs here who I'm counting on to guide me along as we, as we do this together, and that's why we also passed that, the rules, which was helpful for me to see, so I came up with the smart idea to share it with everyone, and I think it's useful. The next, I guess, item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from March, and I assume you all, everybody has received the package of, yeah, okay, so I guess I should ask, does anybody have any, any comments concerning the minutes?
I have a couple of changes, Eric Hard, to add to me. On, on section nine of Old Business Strategic Planning Act.
Page.
Six.
We should number the page.
Normally numbered.
Yes. On the second last card off on the page, it says, Kim noted, she sees it an annual review process, it has, and she has added to it.
I didn't want Megan to feel burdened by having to match up perfect minutes, I wanted her to know that, you know.
Your generosity is stairs. On the next page, right after that, the third paragraph down where it says, Jane noted, Jane noted it makes, it made sense, remove charts, so Jane noted it made sense to remove the chart of your buyer targets, so I add two and allow the move. See that thing?
I got it.
Yep.
And, and I found one more, on the last page of the, of the minutes, not the last page of the passage, the last page of minutes, in 14 trustee comments, there's a sentence that starts halfway through the second paragraph, Tom and Eric Hard saw her at a recent meeting, and she told Tom that she would be happy to reconvene with me, so just add she after that.
Say that one more time? She told Tom that she.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
And I'll have to bring that back to the edited version. I also have something.
One second.
Okay, so I'm on, I'm on page five, I took the page numbers on, which is under seven, or eight, New Business, but it's actually on the next page, it's the fifth page, paragraph down on the page, under, second page of New Business, so it's the words, the paragraph starts with K. Cahill noted, I just wanted this to reflect a little more clearly what I had meant to say, so I already wrote up a sentence that I submitted, and I'll read it out now. K. Cahill noted the board would review a suggestion to make Tom Starkins a trustee emeritus, this could be voted on at the April meeting, the emeritus status did not endowed the right to vote, I didn't say this part, so I put my name off it, the emeritus status would not allow the right to vote, that would allow him to attend meetings, be recognized by the chair, and provide historical background, and I submitted that in writing. So, and I did want to ask, Chair, is this the appropriate juncture, there's been an update to this?
I would say yes, if you have something to say about that, as updated, this would be.
Yes, so the update is, is that, we have heard, so I received an email from county administrators suggesting that there are quite a number of impediments in terms of, you know, allowing this to happen, and I do have, either read that or just know that it's a bunch of impediments involving the bylaws, and that kind of make this a very difficult thing to do. We want to hear what those impediments were, and also, Tom, having seen this, that has basically said he feels like he wants to take that, I'd be off the table, so, yeah, you know, I didn't put it on, put it on the agenda for those to read.
Okay, so there's really nothing to vote on, I suppose we all want Tom to know, he's always welcome to attend our meeting, so that we can get the benefit of this institutional knowledge going back many, many years.
Right, and he knows that, so, that's the status.
Is there a way that we can record what we've found out from county administrators?
I can, that's true, I can submit.
Do we have some institutional knowledge about that?
Read it in the trustee comments, maybe?
Yes.
That's, because then that would be a good place for it. Okay, yeah, I could read that in trustee comments, and also Tom is planning a, well, the select board is planning to honor him on May 23rd, so any of us who can go to the select board that night, him and Carol, and also Tom is planning, possibly planning a small party for himself at the library, that's the latest update, so.
Right.
Yeah. Just want to email me what you found. Yes, and I'll email. That's my.
Okay. Anything else? Well, next item on the agenda would be, excuse me, oh, you want to vote? Okay. I asked for the vote, if somebody had to make a vote.
You asked for a motion.
I, can I ask for a motion?
So moved?
They moved to accept the minutes as amended.
Second?
Second, okay, we have that motion, I'll say, if you're in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone objects to that motion, please say nay. Motion is passed unanimously, thank you very much for helping me along on my first official vote. Next is the director's report, I'll turn to Kim.
Thank you. All right, so, it's been quite a busy month, on March 29th, this board approved the library's 2023 to 2027 strategic plan, hooray, copy editing is going to be taking place soon, we're kind of just organizing that, and working on creating, you know, the kind of public-facing documents at this point, so first we want to get a copy, but that's where we are with that, you'll receive updates as those things kind of work out. And staff day was held on the 31st, thank you to everyone who joined us for lunch, that was really nice, the day was a really great success, we've had a lot of good feedback about it from staff, they all found it very helpful, or maybe I shouldn't say they all, but most people that we've heard from found it very helpful. This past month, Robin Flynn helped 15 patrons with tech help, those are appointments, as well as some of the email questions that come to her individually for help with technology, and again, we're just looking to kind of build up that program and that offering. We've been working on reviewing our DVDs and Blu-rays to identify things that need case replacements, that's a really like time-consuming and manual process, but it helps the collection, you know, just look a lot better. We also, actually, I don't know if this is in here, because it might not have been completed yet, but we also just interfile the Blu-rays and DVDs together, so if someone's looking for a title, they can see if there's a Blu-ray copy or DVD right next to each other, because oftentimes you can take either at this point. You know, when they first came out, you had to have a special player, most players now you vote, so that's a really nice thing for patrons, because you don't have to go to multiple areas to see if there's a copy of something you want. Tech Services has completed documentation around processing children's nonfiction materials to allow staff to include references, to reference those standards when they're working on new-to-them collections, so that's, I think, at least for the past six or seven years, I think, children was cataloging their own materials, that's not a usual procedure, and now that we've had some personnel turnover, we've brought it back to where it belongs, which is at the Tech Services. The volunteers, the and tech services staff, make huge progress with redoing the nonfiction spine labels and our DVD, and looking at our DVD collections, so about 35% of the nonfiction collection has new spine labels now, they're a little bit easier to read, they have, they're just a little more involved. It used to just be, you know, like a one-letter thing, like a number, and then a one-letter, and that's very hard to shelf, it's very hard for patrons to then find what they're looking for within those numbers, and so now it'll have like three letters, so that you can kind of alphabetize yourself once you're at that stage of the game. So I want to thank Rand Cronin, Manny Willock, Kim Regan, and Mimi Aziz for all their help on this project, and we also had a number of volunteers help very heavily, Adriana, Brian, Annabelle, Jamino, Maddie, and Josh, and, you know, they're consistently working hard, I feel like every week, we're getting like way further than expected. The Library Foundation reviewed a few grant opportunities that arose in between their usual rounds last month, Paula Dugan had completed an LFN grant request for services and programs for reluctant readers, the request included having a literacy specialist who will provide children in grade 1-2-5 the opportunity to have private sessions, you know, there would be a series of early literacy puppet show storytimes, they'll be purchasing a collection of box books, which is like a built-in audio kind of device, and they've also approved a grant to cover half of the cost of the community room upgrades that we need to really, you know, effectively help with volume for hybrid programming, things like that, we're asking the friends to cover the other half, they've, and they're receptive to that, but they officially vote, and that will happen later this month. Our pajama drive ended, it was extremely successful, we had 273 pairs of pajamas donated to us, and about 175 of those came from the Rotary Club specifically, so that was really a lovely, you know, they're very supportive of that, and of the library in general, so that was really great, and Paula did facilitate all of that, so the library, because, you know, those are children in need, it's a really awesome program, and we're happy to do it every year. Paula also visited the Montes Story Preschool on the 24th to do four storytimes for their classrooms, Gina Cavada made shelf talkers in the fiction section in children's, which is something that just helps kids find read-alike titles, as well as instructions, you know, for the children's staff, so that they can help with read-alike, you know, offering, it's helping assist us with our readers advisory that happens in that room. Hometown Weekly did a really nice article about our library music program for infants, that was really nice to see, the Needham Channel also did a news story on the egg-to-chicken program that we had, so we, you know, got these seven eggs from the native, or sorry, not from the native, the native farm came into the program for us about how eggs become chickens and all that, but then we also had seven chicks here, seven eggs that became chicks, mostly, from Red the Chickens hatch the chicken program, which is, I think, a national program, but they have a specific, like Massachusetts chapter or whatever, so they give you all the gear, the incubator, all the cages and things, and then they come pick up the chicks once they hatch, so they picked it this morning.
They'll pick it up this morning?
Yeah.
It was a great website.
Yeah, they're like, you know, they're like this big now, and they'd be like flying up in their cage a little, like testing their little tiny wings, they're so cute, so five hatched, which, to be expected. And kids named them, they were all like Star Wars themed, so we had like Hen Solo, all that, it was very cute, and of course, we had the livestreaming of them throughout that time, and that was very popular as well, I think it was one day we had over 600 people that had viewed, so, 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 so popular, I don't see hope we don't do that again next year. And Special Day, Subrata McCarthy for creating a page on our website about it, and for Danielle, and to Danielle Tawa for creating the livestream. Paula also spoke at the Rotary Club this month, on March 14th, she gave a slideshow of our STEAM centers and highlights from children's programming, and had a lot of really groupful conversations about how the Rotary Club could partner with us in the future, so I'm excited about seeing where we can go with that. We recently converted the STEAM center into children's room, and we converted it kind of by swapping it with the storytime room that exists there, we don't use that for storytime anymore, because our programs are too large, and so they come in here, which is a good problem to have, but it meant that room was still unused, and we were looking for a space for children to be able to eat easily in that room, or in that vicinity, and so it made sense to swap out and put the STEAM activities and crafts and things into the old storytime room, and turn what had formerly been the STEAM into a place to eat, because it has actual tile flooring, or tile, but not carpet, and that's, you know, people are adapting to that right away, and are really taking us up on that, there was definitely a big need for that space. Deborah Lovett and the Circulation Team have been working to create updated instruction sheets and procedures to be used for training new staff people, if we get out of here before 9 o'clock, you can say hi, there are two new people that just started, I'll talk about them a little bit, when we get to Personnel. I spoke at MLA's Library Legislative Day at the State House, and presented an award to Representative Balzer for her advocacy work, and visited Denise Garlov about supporting libraries, and since then, we have set up a meeting with Denise Garlov, along with the directors of Dover and Medfield. Danielle has been working with Angel to clean up the archives, which is making it look a lot better, if you've been in there, there were some messy areas, as they moved things around, doing a week here and there that we discussed before, which is now fixed, and so putting some things back, but also just clearing out.
Where's the archives?
It's right across from the reference desk, on the other side of the computers. So, Rand and Danielle met with Melissa Mata, who is the Director of Assessing, to give a tour of the archives and discuss the assessing records that we have, that they have, you know, other places and time that might happen, and we're working on sorting out what we should have, or what maybe should look elsewhere. Any, any discussion or questions around any of that? Okay. I just wanted to say.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, Gabe, just wanted to say how much I appreciate not only all the wonderful sort of front public face and programs, but also the, all the sort of processing and spine labeling and cleaning up of archives, the background work that's being done that keeps the library running well and smoothly, I just want to say that, that's great stuff, but much appreciated.
Thank you.
Yes, and Anna?
Question about the volunteer, so I'm curious to hear more about every high school student, residents from, you know, Needham, who are they?
Some of them, I mean, we have quite a large volunteer program, so it's not, it's not one demographic or another, it's, it's really all ages.
So it's more of an application process, folks who want to be volunteers?
Yeah, sometimes people have, you know, there are school projects and things where they get credit for volunteering, so we will get students, but we also get a lot of adults who are looking to spend time in the community, whether they're retired or not, so it's all over.
So there is an application to, either way, whichever demographic it is.
There's an application.
Yeah, so we, we do have an application for the children's, as per volunteer policy, anybody under 16 can't volunteer in the adult areas, so for the children's, and they do have an application, and they can speak to the poll of Veronica, for the adults, where we don't really have an application, because we have a lot of these folks, we can have, they range in age from the early twenties to later on, fifties and sixties, they call me, we have a conversation, I tell them what we have available for projects, right now, the last year we've had a lot with technical services, so some people aren't interested in that, some are, the volunteers that we do have have been interested, very interested in the things that we've been doing, so it's not really an application, because So it's not really an application because that, we had that a few years ago. That really isn't practical because really, we have to match the volunteers. We, we have projects. And it's, it depends on whether they're interested in that project or not. So it's not really, we, you know, anybody who asks, I speak with them. I tell them this is what we have available right now. A couple of people I've said, after speaking with Rand and other staff members, I'll say, call me back in May or June. I'll have different projects then that you could work on. So, so it's not, to answer your question, and it's not an application, it's a conversation for the, anybody over sixteen years old.
Okay, so sometimes around summertime, the kids, high school students, college students, they may have like wanted to do a community service or some kind of, so you will be the point of contact then?
No, it depends on their age, right?
Depends on their age.
Right, but high school sometimes is under sixteen, so we direct them based on.
Under sixteen to the children's.
Yes.
Any other comments on the director's report? Before I ask for a motion to adopt it, I just want to say I can't say anything. But I still have something to say. Which is that it's nice to hear all this wonderful work that's been done by Paula and, you know, Rob and Rand. And I think it would be nice of all of us, whenever we're walking around, if we happen to be in the lobby, to, to, to let them know that we appreciate, that we know, we know the good work that they do. And to let them know that we appreciate it. So anyway, next, next is building and grounds? Oh, the gift list?
No, so I still have personnel to talk about. We were in the process of hiring our two new circulation staff and getting started. However, they started today, actually. So we had been thinking April tenth, but it worked out today. And so that is Autumn and Elliot, and they're both out at the desk. I'm forgetting their last names. I had to put them in here in case something fell through. But we're really excited to have them. They're both students. Actually, one of them is in some classes with some of our other part-time staff, so that was really exciting. And so they kind of know a little bit about the library already, which is nice. They had already seen the chicks on YouTube, so. And we're in the process of interviewing people for a part-time reference position. Okay, so then moving on to gifts. Were there any questions about the gift list or any comments? And we would look for a motion to.
Looking for a motion to approve the director's report? Just the, oh, just the gift list?
Yeah.
But it says, the other stuff that looks like it's just information for the other agenda is. Okay, motion to approve the gift list.
I move to accept the gift. I'll second. I was trying.
You gotta be quick.
It's like family.
All those who support the motion, please say aye. Anybody opposed, please say no. The motion is approved unanimously.
Okay, and now onto buildings and grounds. Angel and the staff buffed the floors on the first and second floor while we were close for staff day. They were very excited to get that done. And it all really looked great. They've been working on replacing some of the building's air filters and they just installed another children's gate on the storytime room since now kids will be actively using that room again. We've still been talking about the sink area and the pantry and alarms on the different staircases for staff. I think you probably got more work done, but you have to be out for a little bit this week, so. Okay, financial reports. Is there any, any questions or comments about financial reports? You should have all three documents, the operating budget, the state aid report, and
So it looks like we're on track this in terms of the operating budget.
Yeah.
We're on track for this fiscal year.
We are. We are in that stage of the year where we really start to shut down our spending. So all of the selectors, the people who order our books, they've been getting reports about what they need to spend out and have to make a plan for how to spend it by a certain date. And then anything that they think they're not going to be able to spend, we have plenty of places to reallocate that, so we will do that. And we're looking good. We're on track. So, yes.
Just a quick question about one of the line items in the state account.
Yes.
With security cameras. I know that we've thought over that in detail in the past, but I was wondering if there's any movement with town on where that process is.
So there is no process right now because we have put it off.
Okay.
It's here so that it's encumbered.
Right, right, for future.
For it, but as we're doing the space planning, we don't really want to add a bunch of additional cameras at this point. We don't know where we would really want them in the future. So what's going to be your marketing?
Got it.
Right, and at some point, I'm sorry, raising my hand.
Yes, okay.
At some point, I guess I'm asking, I'm trying to remember what the timing is of the new state aid proposal for the coming year.
That would come at the beginning of the fiscal year.
So we'll be seeing that at June, the June, the July.
That was the same question.
Yes, it'll change over that.
Yeah, it's been around for a while, so.
It has. Infincom notices it, but I've explained about this year the same thing, and that's, that's the line. Because we do want them there and we, you know, we decide what it seems for.
Yes.
Do you have like a, do you generally have a strategy of moving expenditures, especially for selecting the materials, like away from trust funds and toward, you know, allocate budget? With non-trust funds? Like when it comes especially to the end of the year, are you trying to kind of spend out from a particular area of the places? And preserve trust funds or how does, how does that?
Yeah, so because we have the planned spending document, we also get friends money for collections, sometimes LFN money for collections. We want to spend down our town money by the fiscal year end, like, or actually now-ish, like by May, whatever, in May. And then we move towards spending typically then friends money and trust fund money. So trust funds should be spent out by, we usually would say September, October. Because then we get a report about our trust fund interest and then come to the annual plan spending document at that point. This year has been totally wild because the trust, the treasurer for the town retired and just, they just hired someone new, Veronica Eddie Furness. And so we are working out our interest right now. We just got a report, but there was like a question mark in there, so we're waiting to resolve that. But typically that would come to the board in like November usually, I think. So we kind of leave that as the last, you really zero that. Yeah, so there is a stretch. Any questions to come from the statistical report? Most of our most of our data points are kind of following the same trend, which is that they were up from the previous year from February twenty twenty-two, but they were down a bit from January. So computer use and programming attendance rose in both areas. You know, up from last year's February and up from January.
Yes, Kate.
And just to note, since those of us who have the website going here, I know it's a nice jump in the website use, so it's always nice to see.
Yes, I think we probably have a good number of people going there to see the chicks. Yes. Yeah. All right, so that includes my report and then.
Let's move on to new business. I, I'm not making a motion that we got a gold retriever.
Okay, so for new business, the first item on there is related to the art lending policy. We previously had a policy that said we would lend our Wyatt artwork. We put that on hold last year while we were getting the artwork reappraised and looking at its condition and all of that, and trying to figure out what it would be, what, what it would require for us to successfully lend out the material. Since then, we've worked with Colleen Tesco, who is, you know, a I, I don't know, how would you say, what is she called?
She's, she's a, like I said, official art appraiser, right?
Yes. Yes, so she also recommended that we not lend our artwork, which is kind of my gut feeling as well. And so that's what this policy proposes to do, is to make it clear that we prohibit the loan of that artwork. Exceptions may be granted by the Board of Trustees under unusual or compelling circumstances where clear benefit is shown to the townspeople of Needham or to the NFPL. A formal request for loan must be submitted to the library director and the board of trustees for valuation. I think that leaves us kind of where we want to be. I'm really happy to welcome people to do tours of the artwork here, but especially where it has risen in value. We're not experts in art lending and it, we just don't have the staff time or operational capabilities to really figure out what's appropriate each time a request might come. So we wanted to make it more clear that our general policies, no, if you really feel strongly about it, there's a way to, to at least petition for it.
Anna?
Could you remind us the value of the, of the artwork we're discussing?
No.
No?
I don't remember.
No? It's increasing value of like, oh.
Yeah, I mean, it's like in billions.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to remember. Yeah, I can get it to you, but I don't know it.
So I really like the policy and I, I agree that, you know, we are kind of stewards of this, these major town assets. So it, you know, moves us to have a clearer policy that it really sets this forward. I have two suggestions. One is just a quick correction. I think it's owned instead of owed on the first line.
Yeah.
And the second is, this is just for consideration, we say unusual or compelling circumstances. Perhaps we just remove unusual unless that was meant to address a period because I'm not sure what an unusual situation would be.
I have, I have, can I add a comment on that same sentence or? We have to have a motion on that before.
We haven't even entered.
That's just for discussion.
So also just for new members too, as a reminder, when we go through policies and you'll see some of the trustee handbook that we'll go over in orientations. Policies get brought up at one meeting, they get voted on or can be voted on the next meeting. So we would have discussions tonight, we would rewrite. That would get sent out to everybody and then it would be a vote. So tonight is just a discussion, so it's not.
Okay. So can I add a discussion on the same sentence? Where it says where a clear benefit is shown. I can almost imagine a situation where if, for example, the MFA was doing a major exhibit where perhaps makes sense with that a benefit would be shown, but it's not necessarily to the townspeople of Needham or the NFPL. And I'm wondering if, if it should be compelling circumstances where, where a clear benefit is shown to the trustees. If, if there was an MFA looking to coordinate a dig, and this is hypothetical, a big exhibit, would we be able to say yes? If we had this language, we'd have to be able to make the case that there's a, a specific benefit to the townspeople in Needham. Yes, Michael?
Does that, does that quantify for the unusual?
I, well, I'm imagining we might, might remove unusual and stick with compelling.
Compelling.
And, but I, I.
Yours makes linear sense in that regard.
So the language would then be, under compelling circumstances where a clear benefit is shown to the trustees? You know, or I don't know, where a clear benefit is shown, or are you comfortable leaving it, a clear benefit is shown to the, to the town or the library? And, and we will assume that the MFA is not going to be having exhibit. Okay, and then your heart, I think.
Okay, so I've been working on this all year and so one of the things that we learned from working with Colleen Tesco was, was that the amount of NCY art out in the world at large is vast. He was incredibly prolific. And as a result, that was one of her several reasons that she gave us to, to not lend because there's plenty of it out there. The MFA doesn't need our artwork, nor do any museums, because there's a huge amount of it accessible out there. So that's, that's one reason. And also, you know, in terms of what kind of compelling circumstance. I do, you know, think that a clear benefit should be shown to the town of Needham that are, that the, that it should benefit that maybe, you know, we had our, our tricentennial a few years back, something like that. That's very Needham-centric or you know, that, that there's some reason that benefits the town or the library that we should lend. That, that was the thinking.
Rob?
And, you know, because, oh, I'm sorry, Airhart was next, and then Rob.
I was, I was going to say two things. I, I agree that it should be a benefit to the town, a benefit to the trustees and the manager. We shouldn't be the beneficiaries.
No, I, I, a benefit in, 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 you know, as determined by the trustees, but you have to have, designate who the benefit is. And I wasn't sure hypothetically where if the MFA did come calling and wanted a piece for an exhibit, would it necessarily?
Here's, here's the compelling, uh, here's the compelling idea, I would imagine, with regard to minding out a piece for some sort of retrospective. When that is located in some art gallery, that's going to say that it's owned by the Needham.
And that would be considered a benefit? That's.
It directs that there is a connection between Wyatt and Needham, which could be a benefit. There's also possibly, this is where I'm completely speaking beyond my expertise in art appraisal, which is about zero. But I would imagine that there is some value to art in being catalogued as part of major exhibits.
Yes.
How that increases the value of that art. And, and as stewards of an asset that, that'll be owned with the town, that could be value in order to increase the value of those pieces of art, make it, you know, the, the fact that Needham is an owner of quality art by it as well.
Kate?
I can speak to that. So this NCY art is heavily already catalogued at the Randy Wine Museum, which is the may be repository of Wyatt art. And our, every piece of art that we have here is well documented in the archives of the Randy Wine Museum. You can click in there. It has every, has a history of every piece of art we have here is very well demonstrated there. So you know, I, I don't think that we need to think about trying to increase the value of our holdings or that. It's already well documented and I don't think that our goal should be trying to keep, increase the value of our holdings. Our, our goal is to protect it.
Can I, can I just make one other comment with regard to art? Some, somebody told me about a, a library that basically has sold their original art and they've kept beautiful copies. Okay, but, but, but received substantial amounts of money. I'm not recommending it or proposing it. I'm just letting you know that some libraries have, have in fact done that. They've sold it for what it's worth and they've made beautiful presentations of it remaining in the library that were no longer the originals.
That's how we're going to get our new.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just mentioning it. I thought I was curious to hear that.
I think what I'm hearing, like, I think that to Airhart's point, a future board could decide that is a compelling case, right? And so then that would be up to them. But I, I do, I'm hearing consensus around the idea that it should remain townspeople and not.
I, I'm comfortable with that based on this, you know, rationale that, that, that in the unlikely event that happens, would, would fit within this standard.
I think it's up to the person asking to make the case, right? And they, and then you decide it's compelling.
Are we getting rid of unusual, a motion to get rid of unusual and just keep it compelling? No motion, it's just a discussion. Yes. So.
Again, does anyone?
Does anyone have thoughts about that?
Seems like we're okay with. So. So I will fix those things up and present it back out for a vote next month. Okay. Onto state aid spending. So for some background, every year we have a planned spending budget for state aid money, which is what you saw previously. However, things often come up throughout the year, so there are times where we request a vote to change encumbrances, to add encumbrances, all that. So the first one is that we would like to add a thousand three hundred dollars to the canopy encumbrance. That will help take us through the remainder of the fiscal year without having to kind of lessen any usage. It's just something that's really grown in popularity and we're seeing the need and we can certainly spend that money easily to provide our patrons with that content. So I was looking to have a thousand thirteen, sorry, a thousand three hundred dollars added to that encumbrance. We have enough unencumbered funds to cover that without reducing somewhere else. So that is the first thing. And then the second thing is, sorry. The next thing is just asking for an adjustment to the encumbrance for the state aid consultant to make a consultant and costs so that we can use some of the remaining funds to pay for the copy editing and the designer, which seems appropriate to me, but I would be asking for that to be a change as well. And then the third thing is asking to encumber five thousand dollars for a consultant to work on a board and orientation sort of training. That is basically, the town has identified Mary Beth. She runs, she started a consulting firm called HR Key and does a lot of board trainings, a lot of hiring of library directors, works with libraries a lot too, but works with other boards as well. And the idea would be for her to come in and help facilitate a discussion with us about effective goal setting, norms and agreements of high functioning boards and asking us to work together to create them. And then identify future training opportunities and resources for support. And the town would like to use that to identify those areas of need for other boards in town. So essentially, many people on this board have come, you know, or expressed to me uncertainty about roles, uncertainty about norms, things like that. And so we're thinking this is the perfect time because it's a new board, new members, new director and a new strategic plan. And so it just seems like a really good opportunity to have this kind of retreat. They can be sort of, it would be in a public meeting because obviously we all, you know. However, one thing that they suggested, the town suggested because they have had a couple of things like this before, I guess. But that you could hold it offsite, like for the goal setting meetings for select board, they do an offsite meeting. So it feels a little more special, they get dinner brought in, that kind of thing. So it still be open to the public technically, but as, you know, we probably ask for it to be done as a special meeting because we probably be looking at two and a half hours and we do dinner and then kind of work together on this. So, and this is one of our strategic plan action items was to kind of start solidifying or clarifying really like roles and things. And so I think this is a really excellent start to that and it's a really good time to do it. Her, so Mary Beth, her actual proposal just came in today. It's well under the five thousand dollars, but I would like to just ask that we would, you know, so I don't have to come back next month for more.
Anna?
When are you thinking?
Yeah, so initially we were hoping for May ninth that that might work out. However, we're gonna have UTL coming to talk to us next month about the design of the space plan and stuff. So probably just sometime in May so that we could have it before our goal setting meetings. Yeah. And I think one idea I have that I'd like to maybe see is have her get us started on the goal setting process and like do a run through of like what that might look like. But I think it's a really good opportunity. I don't know, that's my.
Yes, Anna.
So aside from goal setting, is there, would there be an opportunity to also discuss equity inclusion? Or is it only goal setting? Or is it like overall?
I think it's overall board functioning and norms and roles and that type of thing.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it's just more specific.
Yeah, because in the search, we talk about equity inclusion for the staff and we are sort of, you know, in our staff that we are, we work together, so just wondering how we.
So I see this more as focusing on action items oriented towards figuring out our roles and clarifying our roles and how we work together. Just purely.
Acknowledging different voices, different perspectives as we set goals, as we set, as we make decisions.
Has the consultant shared with you a plan as to sort of what would be covered? Because it might be possible that whatever the plan is would include along the way a conversation about these sorts of themes, perhaps not, I'm just wondering, have you seen anything?
There's been nothing like written out at this point, but these were the main things that we're talking about. It was effective goal setting, like how do you get there? It's more about the process of how you effectively set goals.
Right, and that could be very linear. But what I'm asking is sometimes, as you know, we haven't agreed, so how do we manage that? The diversity of perspectives.
Yeah, so that's exactly what they'll talk about is that consensus isn't every individual gets their say, right? The board acts as a board, like those kinds of things that work for us. Yeah, so I would say those would be things to discuss with her. That sounds like a question that actually would be perfect for you to ask her at this.
Yeah, I was wondering, does this proposed encumbrance include the cost necessary for dinner and other things to?
So I would, I would ask for it to be, or yes, for, you know, a trustee retreat as well. Is the term for it.
Say.
So, so just I understand, so is this to serve a little bit as like an orientation for our, both our trustees and those who could always, you know, stand to learn more. And also to proceed our goal settings sessions for the strategic plan? Is that what we're talking about? You say our goal setting, we're talking about the strategic plan goal setting?
Essentially, I mean, but we use that process or would probably want to use the same process for a lot of things, right? Like when we look through policies, it's like, how do you get to consensus? What does consensus look like? Those types of things? Would be sort of that higher level of what she's talking about and working through, I think it would be a very interactive.
So it would be kind of setting us up to begin to do our goals for the coming year of strategic plan.
If not potentially go through the whole thing if we have time, but I still would have to talk to her about it.
And also just to speak to what Anna's bringing up, you know, I think probably messaging to the consultants that, you know, we do want to be inclusive and think of the EI goals, you know, kind of in everything that we do.
Sure.
We don't have that message.
Megan?
Is it, would it be accurate to say that the intent would be to kind of draft a charter? It's sort of like a, no, okay. No, there is a, trustees have bylaws, but it doesn't really talk about how we achieve the things in the bylaws. And so this would be, how do, how do we function as a high functioning board director relationship to achieve the goals? And, you know, like the main goal of being a trustee is to support the library, right? And supporting the library looks like supporting me a lot of the time, which sounds weird, but it is, right? Like, so we work together to figure out policies, you know, our strategic directions, those types of things. And so it's more just getting us all on the same page about what the roles are and how that's.
Seems like it would be helpful to have a clear mission like that so that we can be focused and use the time effectively.
Michael?
Yes, I was just trying to piggyback off that because I understand that this will probably be one of the first boards of trustees I've been on where we weren't, because there is a component of it where we are not necessarily independent, but the town has responsibilities that we do. And I think as the new board member to understand what, and I think what you're saying is the consultant will also explain that and that would be very helpful so that we are kind of like in our lane.
Yes.
And that way we're not spending a lot of time going back and forth over something that we may not be actually able to make any kind of a imprint or make a decision on. So I think for myself, and I'm sure some of us newer people, and I totally agree with you, any board I've ever sat on was to make sure that we put our best effort forward to support the director and where their vision is at the vision of the library. So I, to maximize our time and stuff, I think that's something to consider.
I'm not, is that what this board, this training would be involved? Is this some, is somebody bringing to it a knowledge about how the Needham Town Government works?
Yes, they would be talking about the relationships. Everyone's brought that up individually, like almost to a person about where we fit in as a, as a structure in the town. And so it would be some of that as well.
Anna?
Yeah, along those lines, also the issue of advocacy.
Yes, that's a good one.
Yes, so that, where we can all think of the same.
Yeah, that's, that is definitely a conversation.
That makes you more comfortable.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
So again, the requests for stated are including money for trustee retreat in the amount of five thousand dollars, adding thirteen hundred to canopy and adjusting the strategic plan encumbrance to include that, to say state aid consultant and costs. Like associated costs, I guess.
All right, Airhart, can you make a motion?
Sure, I move to incumbent the state aid fund across these three areas as the plan's for the jury.
Second.
I think Michael beat it his time. All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed, please say nay. It passes unanimously. We're on to the next item.
Thank you. Okay, so trust fund spending. As I mentioned earlier, there's been a large delay in us getting our interest and we still don't have that yet. But we do want to put aside money from the permanent donation fund in the amount of five hundred dollars for helping supply food or decorations for a party for Tom Harkins. This felt like the appropriate place to have it come from because we get a lot of donations that are given without any requests. On them, they go to the permanent donation fund, so that's one that we'll have a little more flexibility in. So this would be, yeah, this is just independent of the spending that we were hoping to have ready.
Rob, will this be open to the public?
It has to be, in fact, yes. Yeah, and no alcohol. And maybe, I don't know. So as Kay mentioned, there's been some thinking about a party for Tom and initially I think he was thinking offsite, not the library. So with using town funds or taxpayer funds, it needs to be open to the public. It would typically be onsite at the location, so like if he wants to do the library, we can use that five hundred dollars. If he and his family choose to fund it otherwise and you, and go somewhere else, they're totally welcome to do that. We would be able to provide like a cake or something in that sort of situation. And so, you know.
But we couldn't spend five hundred dollars.
I would not spend five hundred dollars on a cake. We would not. Yes.
Does that go against the ethics?
Do we know when?
That's up to Tom and Kay has been.
I received a communication from him today that he's thinking about when to do it.
Okay.
He's thinking not to go offsite.
Okay.
That he's thinking a smaller afternoon party at the library.
Yeah.
Maybe before the summer, before people have vacations.
I think if, remember a while ago now, we had sort of a meet the director type of thing in this room and it just got a couple platters of goodies and whatnot. And that would definitely, you know, run under this enough. So, but this is what we're able to contribute when we look at the interest that we received, even though it's not, we didn't get finalized the numbers for every fund yet, which is the issue. But when we're looking at that, the numbers from this year were not good. So this is what I think of the goal setting, have that to be appropriate with other spending.
Any motions concerning this trust fund spending? Rob, could rescue?
I move that we encumber five hundred dollars in permanent donation funds to towards a retirement party for Tom Harkins.
Any seconds?
Second.
Michael? It's like I'm dealing cards. I'll ask for a vote. All in favor of this motion, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The motion is passed unanimously. And we're on to all this. First item, yes, the climate action plan outreach update.
We, unfortunately, still do not have an update. I've reached out to them a couple times, have not heard back yet. I will continue to do so.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Kay?
Yes, is there anything, any extra, you know, are they holding any meetings or are they doing anything?
I mean, I do have meetings. I could just go to the meetings up until now, I've kind of reached out through email to try and get involved, but that's a good point.
There is a meeting.
Okay. But my hope was to sort of dialogue with them sort of in a one-to-one basis and then perhaps get on the agenda at one of the meetings and then we can talk about how we can interface with them.
Are those meetings recorded?
I don't know. I could ask and let you know.
Okay, I can check.
Thanks, Rob. An update on the space planning, I think there's more of an update.
Yeah, we're excited. We're excited to share some of the progress that we've been making with our people at UTL. As some of you were aware of and, and and joined us, maybe virtually on Monday, the UBC was given a in-person presentation by UTL. And going over several options for programming of the space and thinking about changes to that based on surveys, focus groups that they've been doing with residents, you know, across a wide range of ages. They reported on some of the survey results that are leading us to have ways of understanding kind of what were the beats of this community, both now and in the future. Just a reminder about what all of this is about, this is a feasibility study. So even if the town eventually votes to approve kind of funding to move forward with the redesign, that will then open up a whole design process again, right? In which there'll be lots of public input, you know, and opportunities for the board to get discussion about those things. And refinement all the way until, you know, we kind of eventually break ground. That's gotta be a multi-year process, you know, before we can go through, you know, space planning to, to thinking about a larger than design plan and capital, plan raising, all of that. So, so what this looks like then is just saying, here's a picture of where we could go. That's based on what we understand about the community and what are some of our goals and priorities based on the research we're doing in our strategic plan, right? And so what we're presenting today, that came from that presentation on Monday, is a set of three options for, for reprogramming the space that we have. No, no major additions to the, to the footprint of the library. And currently, the user representatives, Kim and myself, are really excited about option three and what it is looking like. And we discussed this with UTL today. And so we're hoping to get from you a sense of conceptually, does this feel like the right plan? Um, and so we're hoping to get from you a sense of conceptually, does this feel like the right plan, uh, to move forward with and start refining with them? Uh, the goal then being, uh, that they're going to kind of do an additional refinement, uh, over the next couple of weeks. Uh, present that, uh, both to us as well as to the PBBC. And then there'll be a final report in July that they'll deliver at the end of the contract, which shows, here's all the research we've done. This is kind of one of, one of the most compelling concepts for reprogramming this site that a lot of stakeholders have, have said is exciting. Um, and so we give that to the town, right?
The li- the link that was sent, that was the presentation that was reviewing all of these things? Are, are we gonna have it, are you asking for us to approve option three at this meeting?
No, there's no.
I wasn't sure if that's what you were asking, because I think we would probably all like to, to, to see the presentation about it.
So there's, there's no voting, right? It's getting, it's, we've been voted in as the user representative, so we've been delegated, um, the decision-making power. But we listen to you all and your input to give to UTIL, uh, to, to think about. Um, so I sent out, so I've sent out the, the, um, YouTube video of the meeting, if you want to look at it, or just the slide deck. Um, and if you have like substantial changes or things that you're thinking about, um, as you look at them or go through that, I would like to receive back information from you by Tuesday because this conceptual window is closing. They've been working on it for a few months, different iterations. And right now, they're looking to quickly pivot to refining one choice. And so what we want to say, like, you know, to repeat, kind of what Eric Hart is saying is, we're, we're wanting to know, you know, does the board as a whole strongly feel that a different option is the one we should be refining? If so, why? Um, so we want to sort of understand that. So what I would do is, we can have some discussion about it now. But if you can get back to me by Tuesday, as what, like, whether you think it's the right plan to move forward with or not and what the, what the things are you want to see changed or concerns you have. And I would then look for themes and be able to give that to you till as your comments.
Okay.
I feel like we need to have someone to walk us through. Sure, so I'm happy to do that.
And that's true, but I didn't want to be, I didn't want us to have to, based on simply this walkthrough, that have to think about it without seeing the, the, the larger presentation.
No, 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 no. Uh, this is, this is, um, this is about kind of discussing what are the things that we're excited about, uh, that we see in these options.
Right.
Um, and then we can filter that back to UTIL and say, you know, the board was excited about these aspects of, of what is presented. You know, we're right now, uh, as user representatives, particularly excited about option three. And we spent a lot of time with our meeting earlier today with UTIL, giving them feedback on option three, what are the aspects that we think are, are both feasible, but would we like to refine with that? Um, and so we're looking for some kind of like high-level comments about those things, you know, because a lot of this stuff is all conceptual, right?
And one of the big changes that we know is going to happen in option three is the removal of the second staircase that they were proposing, uh, which is near the reference desk on the second floor. And on the first floor, it's the area where it says general. That PBBC, you know, felt that would be too big of a cost and whatnot. And that was some of the feedback that we got and moved forward with. Um, but this will add a lot of additional light to the second floor public areas by room, by moving where the archives is. The archives are the least use space. And to have them go into the original part of the building where the children's kind of upper level of the children's floor is right now, makes a lot of sense to us. And it opens up that area, uh, to provide a lot of light, you know, into the space and still adult use. And this felt like the biggest balance for us in terms of not all the adult stuff on one floor. But it does get all of our youth programming onto one floor. And I feel very strongly that that is, um, a big plus of this particular plan and that people will be able to adjust and park on the Highland lot and come in through the second floor to get to that children's programming space, like strollers, things like that. We have ramps, um, here. Um, there's definitely a lot of refinement that we discussed this morning, but that was one of the big things. And PBBC really loved the outdoor areas, uh, that is a section of land that we do own. So there's just a number of things going on in this plan that we really loved with some refinement. But it felt like the right one to move forward with. Um, part of the issues with option two were that it would require movement of stacks onto the second floor almost entirely, uh, like all the adult collection. And that just feels very heavy when we think about walking into the space and how you flow through it. It was initially one of my preferred options because I was thinking, oh, it'd be easiest to just move the teens downstairs. However, then moving everything upstairs, eh, it just doesn't feel right to me. Um, or to really anyone. We kind of all sort of came to the same conclusion about it. And option one is the very least amount of changes. It would still make it an impact, but it's the least amount of them. You know, there's no real separation between the teens and the rest of the second floor. It's not walls or anything, it's just spatial setup. Um, and so that doesn't feel super great to me either because part of the reason for wanting the teens to have like a more dedicated space for them is to help facilitate quieter areas everywhere else. And so option three really gets us to that. It also increases, um, or really improves, I think, the flow of the first floor. As you look around, um, the stairwell, it becomes something that you could come out here and, uh, and go down back to the back of the building to get to like a multipurpose kind of classroom, workspace, programming room, whatever, but you could walk all the way around the stairs, uh, and the washroom, the bathroom, I guess. We talked about with the removal of stairs, how we would be push some shelving over and make more seating areas, um, that would be like a very nice quiet area with lots of natural light coming in over there. So it just feels like the right option to us, but we wanted to get the feedback on whether it feels like the strongest option. Obviously, the refinements, though.
What, but. Yes, Michael?
Is that, um, I'm just trying to conceptualize, there's, there's some wonderful, like, I like the little things where the kids down in, uh, option one, where they have the big circle. That's pretty cool, because if I were a little kid, I'd want that.
Some of those things will stay throughout.
Right. But that's cool. Um, when you're talking about above us here, is that the, the youth room?
That's currently the teen room. And it's, you know, like a fifth of this space.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's just like, so that, that particular part, that whole back section right there has the most light anywhere.
Yeah.
Because it's warm up there. I'm just wondering, I'm just trying to conceptualize how that fits, you know, visually. But I mean, I understand.
So that, yeah, that would become, as it is right now, that would be part of the children's room.
Okay, so.
If you went with option three.
Okay.
That area would be part of that one.
So that would be kind of neat for them because they're to themselves. And, you know, maybe the older kids could maybe act a little better, who knows? But kids making noise in the library never happens.
Yeah, I think that moving the children's room up there, I think it's a great, great idea. I've had, um, input from other parents who are disappointed in our current children's space. And so I think moving it up there, especially with access to the bigger parking lot, would be huge. I know I've come with my kids and I've been frustrated to not go down here if I really drop off books or whatever.
That's a great point.
Um, and, and I couldn't find a parking spot. In fact, for several years, I didn't know how to get into the parking lot. I only really thought about going down here. So, yeah, extra space would be great, particularly the light and, um, putting everybody together. I have seen a lot of teens here when I've come, I think that's a good idea. Uh, it's great that they're using the space here to be able to study and other things. So I think, I think that's really good about option three as well. So, uh, but I think definitely we'll get a lot of, uh, return on investment, I think, about approving our children's area, um, particularly in that second floor area that turned into archives. I think that's a, that's a good idea.
And there was discussion too, just as one other thing, that entry point to the children's room with option three would very likely actually be on the left side of the stairwell in this drawing. Um, so we would rework some of the office space that is there, um, because Eric brought up. It's kind of a bottleneck as, like, as drawn currently. So that's something else we would look at.
Rob? So my thought generally, and I haven't had time to really study these in depth, but, um, you know, we, we don't get these opportunities very frequently to do major changes. And I think the challenge here is going to be that in a lot of people's memories, this is still like the new, the new facility, um, even though it's been almost twenty years. But there will be a lot of advocacy to get to the point where people realize that there's a lot that we could do to enhance the space. But that's all going to say that I think, I, I support option three, um, in, in principle because I would rather have a more all-encompassing change in plan rather than something incremental. Because we, in terms of actually getting this slotted in to the town's funding priorities, we don't really get to go into that, uh, to that list very often because there's a lot of other things that are, that are lined up. Um, so personally, you know, I like the, the overall concept of option three, understanding that a whole lot's gonna change between now and whenever it's more finalized. But I do have a question for Kim, and that is, you know, in your discussions with the town, have, I know that it's very preliminary, but have they been giving any signaling about where this would fit in with their other projects?
Um, not anything concrete, just that there are other things, right? But the town votes to support that or not. Um, they are supportive, I think that they would put it forward to the town to vote on. Um, and, yeah, I mean, they, they're just really supportive. And actually, I will say too, for those who didn't, weren't able to make the PBBC meeting or maybe haven't watched it yet, um, no one brought that up and I was really expecting, uh, brought up that, that it's been only seventeen years, right? Um, everyone seems to kind of get it there. I think FinCom will be a different issue, right? Um, but for the most part, people understand that things have really changed a lot in the past twenty years. How we work has changed a lot. Um, and we certainly, you know, when people come in to do their work and it's in the afternoon, they see the problem. Like, so this really facilitates, I think, a really wonderful use of space, um, with a lot of opportunity for just intergenerational programming and areas to cross paths with people. But, but to really have these areas where teens feel ownership, tweens feel ownership. I think it's commendable that the library has a teen room even that was built seventeen years ago because that was certainly just a beginning to be a trend. Um, but tweens is the next big space. So having kind of a dedicated area for them feels right. All of these plans have a dedicated area for tweens, but I just wanted to call that out, that that is part of why. Um, but yeah, the town's really supportive, um, Kate and Katie certainly get it. And I think they'll, they'll help me figure out how to get there.
If I, can I make a comment? Uh, or? I anticipate that I'll be supporting option three also, but I don't trust my, my, my registration of all of the details simply from looking at this. I think because there is so much at stake, I would urge everybody, uh, who wasn't at the meeting to please watch the video, uh, so that we can, uh, get our comments for you guys, uh, who I'm happy to have represent us. I'm not sure, are there any elements of the other plans that you are, are thinking might possibly be incorporated? Or did you have any comments concerning the option three as it currently exists that we should consider, uh, while we're reviewing it as well?
We have, we had several, um, we had several important, uh, I think, points that were raised earlier today or in our meeting with UTIL with regard to option three. One of them that was, uh, there's different levels of, of ceiling heights, um, up there. And right now, kind of facilities are very open, kind of very, um, light exchange, light across the whole space. And segmenting some of that will change the feel of that room. Um, and so that's something that they're gonna now consider, um, on the next revision is, okay, how would we think about the ways that we could either, you know, lower the height of some of these spaces to move them around?
But lighting is a key thing.
Lighting is a key, then keeping it open, we have, we'll have to do HVAC, um, um, changes on that. Um, I think the other thing, uh, to note here is, um, we were looking also at incorporating the possible outdoor area that's mentioned in option two as also a part of whatever's the final result. So there's a outdoor area that, um, uh, was right out here. Um, uh, that would be next to the children's space, uh, on this line. Um, that, uh, that could also be used, uh, with fencing and things like that, uh, which creates an amazing little, uh, area for young folks to get out.
Well, and particularly if you go with option three, right, where that would have more of an adult-centered area. It's a very wonderful spot for people to step outside and have coffee or do whatever, but also to be used for things like storytimes.
Where is this spot on the floor?
Yes, right here.
You know, option two on that floor.
This is the second floor, so, you know, on the first floor.
So that area, got it, got it, got it.
Yeah, so we were considering, um, having them add in both the outdoor areas, because why not?
So that's exactly the sort of thing I was, I was curious about.
Yep.
Because I like the both concepts of the outdoors.
Yes.
Very inviting.
Yeah.
Uh, Anna, and then Kay.
Um, uh, looking at option three, I like the addition of the sensory room. That's something that has been, uh, for years, parents, uh, have, have been talking about and wishing for, so I'm glad that it is being included. Um, I also like the, the fact that there is the reference desk, one is very central. It's kind of like in the middle, like, reminds me of other libraries I visited that is kind of like, you're in the middle of reaction, so to speak. Um, I am curious about that cafe and how that might fit in terms of assignment of roles to staff, liability issues.
It's not, um, it's cafe seating.
Oh, okay, so it's not.
So we're referring to it as like a place to eat, to sit, but not a serving food.
But then, maybe vending, because there are vending.
There are vending.
There'll be, oh.
That'll be.
So that, that is the area of eating there.
That's with the six tables.
Yeah, and the furniture is just suggestion, it's not really what they would probably put exactly there. But, um, just to show, yeah, cafe seating.
I see, yeah, okay.
And the gallery wall would still exist, um.
Although, although the.
Yeah, well, yeah, but then where the periodicals are, we talked about potentially moving and having that wall space there.
One, one of the, one of the last thing, uh, when, um, you know, linking this to the strategic plan, you know, there's a focus on the, the emerging adults, which are the teens. And then we also talk about seniors. So for the seniors and thinking, we're going to people, kind of getting them into, uh, the, the general population, right? Is that where they would fit?
Kind of, I mean, so there's a couple of things to say about that, I guess. So on the first floor in option three, and in all of these, large proof becomes like an area, like a more condensed area instead of like the big long wall like it is now. Um, and so that's a great spot, we would imagine some reading chairs and things splitting up some of the stacks down there to make it easier. But when you come upstairs to the second floor in option three, what I love about this option that is different from the others, is it really has spaces for adults sort of near the children. Like, it's not completely on a different floor, it's not, uh, the others started to feel a little bit, it's too much one way or the other. This isn't a nice balance, because you have the computers on the second floor still. There would be some sort of wall between the children's room and that area, um, the height to be determined, but.
Yeah.
Um, but you'd have computers, the study rooms, all of those things. One of the ideas that we talked about was moving, uh, you know, we were moving the entrance to the children's room, that would move that desk there, um, and then having sort of an in-between space or room where the reference desk currently is, that could be a multipurpose room for everyone. And I think when we're talking about intergen- intergenerational stuff, a lot of that just happens wherever the program happens. So that I'm not as concerned with like a space for that as much as, um, this allows though that flow through a lot of areas that are in general use, which are where adults tend to be, um, to get to the children's room, to get to the teenage room. So for adults, you know, that find joy in like seeing kids here excited about reading and whatever, like, that's great. They get to see them going in, coming out, all the things. Um, but it's not right on top of them in a.
Right.
Negative way. Um, and then same with the teens, you know, they, they find their space easily.
And, and the children's room, from what I remember, they have changed, but it's really active. I mean, there's a lot of running, there's a lot of, yeah, commotion at times. So, so it needs, it needs a lot of space to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I ask a couple of questions? It, will there still be the, the Friends book sale, the, the?
Yes, that actually has prime.
But is that collection of, would, would we then just see the, the old used books as soon as people walk in the Highland Avenue entrance? Because that doesn't, that strikes me as maybe not quite the right entrance. You know, all the old paperbacks and stuff, as soon as you walk in the nice Highland Avenue entrance. I have a question about that. And is the quiet room going to continue to be a magazine room? Or is there no longer going to be a place for magazines?
No, we, we were talking about, uh, it, the.
No, we we were talking about uh it the periodicals, they had moved over by the cafe.
Maybe I missed it.
However, we talked today about potentially moving that or keeping it in the YF room, because why does it need to move? Like, I don't see the need for that. Um the book sale did come up as a conversation piece, I actually think. When it's done well, it looks nice, and I think the friends would really appreciate the the space. But otherwise, it's a very hard space to plan something in, you don't want it to be a cafe space, because it's right next to the quiet area. You know, it has good visual uh lines of sight for staff to see kind of infant patrons who are using it to see staff. Um helps buffer the sound kind of going off into the sides of the rooms. Um I just think it'll look nice because we're gonna do it nice.
Okay.
Um and I think the stuff that we tend to have for sale isn't tattered, right? Like, they they do a very good job of selecting what's gonna go out there.
No, I'm a loyal friend, as you know, and I'm not looking to argue against it having prime real, prime real estate, you know what I mean? I'm just imagining that to make, you know, for many that the first main entrance when you walk in on. You know, Highland Avenue, and you want it to be an appealing, you know, entryway to the to the to the library.
We did talk about potentially pushing it back a bit, but then what do you do if that space becomes the issue, and I just. I don't really see a better use for it. I think it's this kind of odd sort of area, it's a little too large for just being an entry that has nothing in it. Um and I think it'll look really nice when it's set up well. But those are kinds of things too that we can move around eventually.
Yeah, Michael, over Kay, and then Michael.
I'm just wondering, I'm a little unclear when you're talking about the stairways, are we adding stairways or closing stairways?
That would, um that was the suggestion, and that is something that we're clearly not going to be forward with.
So the stairway would stay.
The regular stairway would stay.
And the old.
This additional stairway would not.
Oh, and the additional, you're talking about this one over by the cafe.
That would have to be built.
Yes.
Like literally like cut a big hole.
Yeah.
Pour a lot of concrete.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, and and in that same area, I'm, you know, uh interested in the art gallery. And not wanting to lose our gallery space or to create a nicer art gallery space, and that that's.
So if you've been to Newton, it's nice to um. It's just a reference that I have going there so much, but they have one big walkway in, but it's cut out. Where they're, they have their Friends book sale and stuff like that, but it, there's this like carve out to the side, right? And so the gallery wall goes all along that, and people traverse it when they want to look at the art. And so the way that this would happen is the same, yep, the same wall that it is on.
Yeah.
Right, it would go along that, and then um. In the cafe area where the periodicals are, I would imagine that is where we would continue, or without the staircase. It could just continue along between the windows and that back wall.
That's an important part.
Yes, they they heard that in the um in all of their things with the Friends and stuff like that too, so that's that's on their minds as well.
And um I just, also, I noticed in the uh survey information that virtually every demographic group said it. Number one thing they wanted was more individual study space, and so. I'm not sure how I would see that reflected here, but for both adults, teens and teens, probably not for children so much.
Yeah.
Um individual study carols and individual study spaces, I can't really find them on here. So that would be, and that's a top priority for all demographics.
So all the seating along the first floor, uh windows looking out on Rosemary. There's a laptop bar there next to the cafe seating there, um there's a laptop bar, and then all along the windows, there's. Um suggested seating, like individual types of spaces. We talked about adding in a couple of places as well, um like the back area on option three, where it says general and archives. There's a series of like four desks in a row kind of thing there, but without the staircase, what we talked about doing was moving the stacks to start. Back further back so that we can make more spaces there for reading and for individual study. This also adds a di- like four study rooms.
But the the those have a reserved general, right?
Yeah, but it makes more quiet areas for people to work.
So so for people who want to come in and study individually, I just think, you know, designers love to have these big open spaces with big. Tables, but individually, people don't really want that.
But in in option three, where the number one is for general, all along that window area, there'll be carols as there are now.
As there are now on the second floor, sort of, like it would be a similar style.
Yeah, see, I don't see them there.
On option three first floor.
For second floor, first floor, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's chairs, there's like individual chairs there, but not study carols, so I'm looking for study carols, I guess.
Great, so as I said, the furniture suggested is not the actual furniture style that would necessarily be there. And that would come way later, that's not really about the discussion for this.
And so, uh you know, just in general, I think we, you know, we were saying the trustees aren't gonna vote on this, but I do think. You're gonna want the trustees on board, so.
Absolutely.
We need to make sure that the trustees have enough time and are giving input, um and that's their part of the process.
So so that's why we're asking to send me feedback right now to Kim by Tuesday, and then UTL is coming to our meeting on May ninth to present that next.
So that's, so that's a presentation before or after we direct them to pursue option three? Yeah, so what we're talking about is.
The rush is to get it done by July as they agreed to in their contract, so that we can have it go before the town meeting in the fall. Yes, and and again, we could run a process similar to a strategic plan, if we get to that, where. If a person has a thing they want to say, we could vote on it, um but. That's why I'm asking you to send me the thing so I can look for the themes and what the board seems to have consensus around. Um so that we can have a report with those for five minutes.
And just to remind you, this will, this will be, this is a proposed.
Yes.
Conceptual design.
Yes.
It says that this would be an amazing, you know, way to think about reprogramming the library space. It will come with a cost estimate based on those changes that we're proposing in this study. And then that will be what starts the kind of process and thinking about how would we representation fund to do that, and then when we launch an actual. Redesign, that will then go through a whole public process again with board input and everything. You know, with lots of changes to either major or minor aspects of, of anything that you might be seeing here.
Yes, but it is a pivotal moment where we're setting the direction, you know, you know, from the outset. Which is why it's important for us all to to watch the video presentation and and get back to that with our comments. Yes, Michael.
The one thing I'm, maybe I might have seen it, what happens to this room?
This stays the same. In every single one, this is just. This is the easiest part of it.
Oh, I didn't know, see? You guys, what are you doing to me here? This is so much different.
Yes, this is, this is the easiest part of the whole thing, is that this.
This would be crazy to try to change this.
Yeah, exactly.
This is such a, a uh. Final used.
Yes.
Space in here.
Agreed.
Yes.
Okay, is there anything more? That was just a conversation which was very enlightening, I think we we we, you know, we we appreciate. We knew it would be a a lot of work to move, get us to this point, we appreciate your efforts. And we'll get back to you with our comments before too. What will happen then after we all get back to you with with our comments? Will you send us some sort of, you know, summary of of maybe, you know, the 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 notes or suggestions? Uh that you would be sharing with them on our collective behalf?
Yes, I would be sending uh that to you and to UTL to work on.
Anybody else have anything to say? We should move on to the next item of business. Uh the equity inclusion resolution, is there anything to report about that?
There, there is something here of the uh on your report, and I do have one I want to uh yeah, go ahead, share. Yeah, there is a our second uh third, actually, Needham Connects. Book group discussion is coming up in May eleventh, and I will share the link if you'd like to join. The book that we'll be reading is Rough Sleepers by Tracy Kidder. And that will be May eleventh at seven PM, and it's gonna be online for the children. Sorry, just online, yeah, there's some.
Then, uh is there a resol- there's no resolution to be voted on, we'll just move on to the next item. Uh the the Arts Exhibits Committee report.
Yes, it's just as of tonight, I'm back running the Arts and uh Exhibitions Committee. Carol has passed on to me to state the status of the um various. The coming year, there's a few holes we filled, and we need to set up a meeting with Gail and the the Subcommittee. Public Subcommittee, so we have to post the uh old public meetings, um so I'm in touch with Gail to try to find a time. Do that, and so probably by the next meeting we'll have.
Thank you, uh Mica, Chris, Chris.
That's me.
Anna?
Uh yes, I think uh still pursuing hopefully one, at least one other event before the end of the fiscal year. I've been stretching out unfortunately. Um um due to different um scheduling conflicts and whatnot, but I'm still working on, hopefully I'll have something to report next month.
Okay, was was there a conversation at some point about the continuation of the MacArthur Series, or a question about whether we would?
Yeah, I can do a quick update, the society hall, we were thinking about maybe doing it every other year. Typically, the vice chair that stays in charge of the MacArthur programming, which uh we have some funds available. And it's in honor of a former director within the MacArthur. So there's a fund set allotted every year for to bring speakers or to do some kind of programming. In the past couple of years, the Friends have really done an excellent job in producing lots of programming. So we, the MacArthur, the way I've been running them, the two times that they like to share is by. Um kind of complementing, if the Friends are doing this type of events that bring like family oriented events, which is new for MacArthur. Sirius is usually got more adult programming. Um and other different types, so that's why we are attempt to balance that that, you know, the the programs available. So I don't know, it's up to for discussion, I suppose, you know, it's um your, your vice chair, what do you think?
I I'm in favor of continuing it. I I like your idea of complimenting it so we're not competing with the Friends programs. I I like some of the, you know, musical programs, we've had a variety of things. I'd certainly be happy this coming year to uh to take that on.
Thank you. That's that. I guess I can report on the Friends of Library, I don't know if any of you went to the uh Marcia Bemphill from Apex Roadshow, had a. Had a really nice presentation, filled filled this room and showed videos and behind the scenes clips, and. Uh it was a big success, and I know we're all looking forward to April twenty sixth. Uh the event with Doris Kearns Goodwin is is. Has the makings of very, you know, really nice evening, with a lot of pieces falling into place. I'm not sure if 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 you were aware the last time of of the news about. The recording artist living in Taylor opening the event. Uh did I talk about this last month? So that's, that's not new. But in any event, a lot of pieces are falling into place. You know, our only, our only concern now is apparently when, when, you know, the advice when you're selling tickets for a large event like this is that. The ordinary course is is to sell slightly more tickets and fill the room, because it's ordinary uh to have to have no shows, but. Now, uh the the crisis is we're worried that the too many people are gonna come, so if you have a friend who has tickets but they're really not interested, tell them to feel free to stay on. It's no, really, it's gonna be very exciting, spoke to Doris Kearns Goodwin this past Friday, she's extremely enthusiastic, and Jared Bowen was, you know, was talking to her about. The subject of the conversation and uh, you know, really very, very, very exciting, first to Kate and Anna.
Just, I, you may, this may have been put out there, but what's her topic?
The the topic is 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 is, I think, leadership interpreting of time.
Yes, her book.
Uh and the, you know, but it involves, the conversation will cover uh the various presidents. Most, you know, she's primarily a presidential historian, historian, and we'll we'll cover uh things relating to the president, the presidents. But also we'll we'll touch on issues relating to uh the current state of American leadership. Uh and, you know, you. You can't avoid the current circumstances, though it's not gonna be primarily a political focused uh subject. And, you know, I I think the pieces are falling into place, the Friends have a number of of people who are. Contributing in various ways, uh we've been doing it in collaboration with the foundations, and a nice, a nice way to join forces. I don't wanna, you know, uh you knew that uh that the Library of Congress was preparing a personal video and. I'm not gonna show it to you because everyone should see it, uh fresh at the event, but it's really quite nice and uh and and and. You know, we'll all be happy to see it. Yes.
Any updates on Needham Channel, maybe doing a clip or anything?
Yeah, so that's been, that's been perhaps the only frustrating, it's not the only one, but that's, 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 you know. Doris's representatives, for a variety of reasons, are resistant to to allowing the event to be filmed. She has, you know, all all sorts of obligations with other television channels. We, you know, I continued to make an effort to see if the Needham Channel could at least film a clip, a section, and. Uh so far, you know, that that doesn't seem to be happening. But I suggested to the Needham Channel folks that there's something to stop them from filling, filling the crowd as they walk in the door, uh and there may be photographs. We'll see, uh but for now, that doesn't seem to be part of the plan.
Is there pictures allowed?
Yes, you know, that, you know, I, we asked her this, and she understands during the pre-event reception, there'll be pictures allowed. She, they don't like pictures during the conversation during the event, because that leaves to pictures of when she looks funny, her mouth is open. So generally, we'll we'll not be allowing pictures during the event, but she's, you know, she she says that. Reception such as what we're talking about, it's not uncommon to have selfies and 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 photos, and she's actually seems quite enthusiastic at this point. Yeah, so, uh I sorry, I don't know for Megan, if it, you know, if if you, if it'd be too late to get a ticket, the event is sold out. You know, we'll see, we'll see if we can find, I have a a a very demanding group of friends who are. Keeping me on a tight leash, but I am ignoring on occasion in terms of making some tickets available, but, you know. Uh do you have a ticket yet, Michael? Do you know where you're involved in the loop now?
No, I didn't, I was thinking about it, but I just, if if it is, if it is.
You know, the the concern honestly is the fire laws.
Right.
And and the fact, you know, that that Kate's gonna be at the event, and the town people are but are gonna be at the event, but, you know, so. But what, you know, we'll we'll have to, I think we should continue the conversation, and if if I become aware of of loose tickets. You know, that if you guys are interested in buying a ticket, like, you know, I I'll I'll let you know. Really, all I can say. Next on the agenda. Yes, Friends of the Foundation, Joan, please.
Hi, um. We have a committee that is trying to be working on updating our website. You know, it it hasn't been updated in a while, so we'll try to make it more current and. We are hoping to have some kind of recognition ceremony. For the Kate Field Steel plaque that is going to be going on the History Genealogy Room. That will probably be or be located, but I hope the plaque will follow wherever it goes. But uh we've had a little, you know, it's a little hard with the family, uh they want everyone there. So uh as soon as we have a date, and I can confirm it with him. I'll let the trustees know, maybe three, two, ten, it will probably be a Saturday or a Sunday, only because. The two sisters are living Western Macs, so they cannot come during the week. Uh and they're teachers, so unless we try to do something at the very end of June. Uh but the family is working this out and figuring it out, and they're gonna let us know. Soon as we know, we'll, we'll share.
Thank you. I should have mentioned, by the way, also in connection with the Doris Kearns Goodwin event, that Needham High School has been involved, and we, you know, the. The principal's been, you know, very, very supportive and helpful, and there'll be a a few high school students. A group of high school students are preparing questions for the question and answer session, and they'll be there to that to ask the questions. So it's a, you know, we're we're trying to. Cover, you know, a broad, a broad category of people, including the the students, so. I guess we're almost done, any trustee comments to add? Cover, you know, a broad, a broad category of people, including the, the students, so, um, I guess we're almost done, any trustee comments to add?
Okay, yeah.
Rob? Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say thanks to Kay for an awesome year's chair.
I had to follow Rob's act, and which was very helpful, watching some chair. Thank you. And Jake, luck.
I think we're gonna meet with the, uh, with the consultant, and the first thing he's gonna say is we need to oust this chair. A motion to adjourn, or was there another comment to you?
Well, did people want to hear this, um.
Oh, yes.
Uh, communication from Katie King, the District Town Manager, about the, uh, just got, we should, we should share it, um, so, about whether. The idea of creating an emeritus position and the issues that raise, um, he said, I appreciate the bowl of honoring comes decade of service, however, the specifics of voting a trustee emeritus gave me pause. There's no clear basis within the town charter or the library trustee bylaws to do so, and there are no details on what the position entails. If the board is interested in exploring the idea of a trustee emeritus, uh, I request you postpone the vote, so we can selectively do some due diligence around if and how this role can be established. Some of the questions I want to bet is, if the county believes this can be done, be a change to the bylaws, the trustee bylaws, or the creation of a library policy, if either of these is possible. I recommend that the trustees then run a policy setting process to determine who would be eligible, the length of the emeritus status, what the expected responsibilities or privileges would be, et cetera. That would give the board, future boards, uh, position recipients and the public a shared understanding of the role and where it fits in the Needham Republic, various governance structure, if it's not something the board wants to explore, we can bring some. Alternative ways to recognize Tom specifically, or the retiring trustees more generally, but I just wanted people to have that.
And that's what you shared with Tom.
And I have shared this with Tom, Kim and I have shared this with Tom, and, uh, you know, he seems okay with this not, I did not hear from him that he would not want to pursue. So of course it's up to the trustees, uh, when they want to pursue this.
Well, I, I would suggest, let's wait, if we hear from Tom and he would like us to pursue it, we would consider it then, no?
Yeah. Okay.
Any other, Tom, yes?
Just a reminder of, thanks for sending the reminder, on May twenty third, the South Board is going to be honoring Carol and Tom.
Yes.
Six P M, the town hall.
May twenty third, you said?
Yes, and it will be, will be on the agenda, it'll be on the agenda, the first, first and second item, so we shouldn't be there more than fifteen minutes, I imagine.
Yes, six o'clock, I have it.
Six o'clock, yes, so. And, and one second, uh, just point of clarification, um, Kim, are you sending, I've noticed that you're sending emails to trustees, but you're B C C, you're right, um, so should we? Send information to you for us to send, or how do we communicate, because I don't have emails for the new trustees.
Should go to Air Hard also.
Yeah, so, um, I can send out the emails from Megan and Michael.
Okay.
I may want to change that. Your email, yeah, perfect, yeah.
Okay.
So once I have their emails.
Okay, and then we can just B C C as we've been doing, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's her.
You have mine, okay. Cause I got your stuff, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you preferred email and, and phone numbers.
Yeah, that's helpful.
Um, and then, yes, part of that is really, I mean, essentially it's just good practice for making sure there's a little preparation.
Right.
Back and forth on something accidental.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I wanted to check what was.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes, I'll send those out once a day.
Well, I, I'll just make a couple of closing comments also, likely I have one more thing.
So I wanted to thank everybody for, um, a great meeting for my first one, I'm sure, and make it feel the same way. And look forward to, like I said, uh, making this successful.
Happy to be here. Thank you so much, I was basically gonna say welcome again, and, you know, thank you for joining the team, uh, we look forward, you know, to, to, to your valuable contributions to all we do to support the library. Uh, I'll remind you all again, please review the video about the, the space planning, because there's a lot at stake, and, and, and they want to hear whatever we have to say as, as, as they go forward, and. I'll even repeat again, you know, if, if, you know, if you're in the library, uh, make a note to the staff, you know, feel free to introduce yourselves and, and thank them, and. Make sure they're aware of our appreciation for, 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 for all they do. And with that, is there a final motion of the evening to adjourn the meeting?
To adjourn.
Air Hard?
I second.
Seconded, I, uh, all in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Meeting is adjourned, thank you very much, everybody.
Bye, Dimitri.
Nice to meet you.